We now have a presentation from the Genesee County Land Bank. It's expected to be a 30-minute presentation to the Flint City Council and the community at large by the Genesee County Land Bank. I do believe there's a representative from the Land Bank with us today. And again, that is 30 minutes. And we will go ahead and turn it over to, I'll let you introduce yourself, I was about to say it. Go ahead.
Hi, excuse me. My name is Karma Lewis and I am... Okay. All right. I'm Karma Lewis, Community Relations Manager for the Genesee County Land Bank. And I'm here to share some information and hopefully I'll have all of the answers that you're asking for, but if I do not, I will get them to you in writing. As you know, the Genesee County Land Bank receives properties from the county treasurer after the previous owners have stopped paying their taxes and the property reverts back to the treasurer. The properties do not come to the Land Bank with any type of funding to address maintenance. The Land Bank currently holds 13,000 properties, formal tax foreclosed properties. We work very closely with partners, including the city, to secure resources to maintain those properties. Since 2004, the Land Bank has secured and invested over $260 million in grants for blight elimination and revitalization efforts inside the city of Flint. And thank you for the 16 million ARPA investment that allowed the Land Bank to leverage an additional $41 million from other partners, bringing the total grants to $57 million, allowing us to pursue 1,960 commercial and residential demolitions countywide. More than 90% of these demos are inside the city of Flint. With all structures funded directly with city ARPA dollars have been knocked down, we anticipate completing the invoices, payments, and reimbursements in the coming months. We aim to complete all other grant-funded demo projects by the end of 2026. Timeframes from individual demos continue to be updated on the Flint Property Portal. Okay, as of Friday, December 5th, we've had 1,773 blighted structures prioritized for demolition. 1722 of those were residential and 51 were commercial, including 91 recent burned and dangerous emergency demos. We have demolished 1,506 structures. That includes 1,460 residential and 46 commercial. Under contract and in progress, we have 200 demolitions. There's 115 properties that are on bid or about to be released for bids. And we're preparing another 134 properties for demolition. We have managed to remove 88 structures from the demo lists. Those structures were actually purchased by people that wanted to either put them back on the tax roll, or they wanted to demo them themselves. As the ARPA and MACH-funded demolition program winds down the next year, we continue to actively pursue additional funding to address the remaining blighted structures. At present, about 1,455 Land Bank-owned structures still require demolition in the city of Flint alone, requiring us to secure additional funding. The Land Bank is currently using the Flint Property Portal to conduct a citywide housing condition inventory. The housing condition inventory was previously completed by the city of Flint. It updates the conditions of more than 50,000 properties. This information will help to better understand the community-wide challenges and, excuse me, support planning for neighborhood revitalization, demolition, vacant land reuse, and home ownership. Once this inventory is complete, we will provide you with the details. About 85% of it is already complete, so once it's done, you'll have that information. Okay, and someone asked about blight. During the past year, we hired and trained 61 local maintenance crew and 22 full-time year-round team members. These crews inspect foreclosed properties, clear illegal dumping and debris, remove brush and dangerous limbs, clean out vacant properties to prepare them for sale, mow vacant properties, and respond to the resident complaints about vacant lots. We depend on our residents that reside in the neighborhoods to keep us updated on the property changes. If they see any type of issues, please let us know by going to our website, thelandbank.org, and click on the Report an Issue tab to let us know. That's what I have. Questions?
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. At this time, we will go ahead and open it up for any council members that may have questions. We're gonna start with hopefully every council member, just taking two minutes for now, and then we'll kind of go from there. Is there a council member with a question?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate you being here. There's a lot of questions. In the fourth ward, you know, there's a lot of vacant structures as well as a lot of vacant, again, business, commercial properties, excuse me. I know that additional funding is being sought. I've been in many conversations with the county treasurer and with Michael Freeman and all this about this. Do we have any timeline as to when additional funding will be available, or are we waiting until this round of demos are being completed before more funding is sought, or is that a continual process?
It's an ongoing, I'm sorry, it's an ongoing process. I don't have any dates as of this moment, but we are, I mean, always looking, always hoping. We do have some grants out there, at least we've applied for grants, but whether or not we receive them, we don't know yet.
One of the major problems, other problems that I hear complaints about is people trying to purchase lots, side lots, and being, taking forever for that to happen. And is anything being changed down in the office to make that a better solution?
Yes. Actually, we're in the process of putting out, of accepting resumes. We're looking for someone to, they're looking to hire someone in the sales department. And when that happens, I can't say right now, but hopefully soon. I have been willing to help them out. People that have questions about what's taking so long, they are welcome to contact me and I can check it out on their behalf.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to ask any questions?
Hi. Good afternoon. Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the third ward.
Oh, sorry. Glad you came out today. You know, I got like, I really don't have questions, but I just want to make sure that the information kind of gets out there for the people. I know a lot of people ask me about properties and where they're at on the demolition list ad, is there funding for it? But you also have a website called Flint Portal, correct?
Flint Property Portal.
Flint Property Portal?
Yes.
Okay, so how do the residents put that on their phones and download that?
It's an app. So they'd have to go depending on if it's Android or iPhone.
Apple.
Apple, yes. They go to whatever store that they go to and look up Flint Property Portal and they download it onto their phone. And if they have any questions on how to use it, I'm available for that too. Now, I normally work with a lot of residents concerning that. That's the route I like. I'm a one-on-one type person. And so they're more than welcome to give me a call or email or, I'd say stop by the office, but I'm not always in the office.
And you can't get upstairs either, right?
Exactly. So just let me know if they want to come.
Okay, and the next question that I have for you, as fast as we cleaned up properties this year, and we all know that, they continuously to put trash on it, even where you guys have camera storage. Are those cameras, do y'all take them up when the winter comes, or are they year-round?
They're year-round, but they may not necessarily be in the same place.
Okay. And what can we do if we see people illegally dumping, which is if it's on Land Bank? Because Land Bank has property and Flint City has property. What can we do in regards to people illegally dumping if we catch them?
That would be...
Are we able to take pictures? Are you guys able to prosecute them? What are the penalties for illegal dumping?
We would actually, you would actually have to call 911 or call the local law enforcement. We do not have security on our staff to go out there and do anything when people are dumping in process. I mean...
That's it. But thank you so much. Job well done. I know you guys have crews out there in the summertime doing the clean and green, and you guys do a great job. Just keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like the floor?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the eighth ward.
Hello. Thank you for joining us this evening. A couple of quick questions, just as budget-wise and our goals and metrics, or metrics on what was planned versus what is being delivered. So you're saying that we've demoed, completed today residential 1,400-some? Is that correct?
Residential, yes. 1,460.
1,460.
Yes.
And my quick math, you had about 450 either being bid or getting ready to be sent out to bid, is that correct?
There's 200 that's under contract and in progress.
Okay.
And then there's 115 that's either on bid or about to be released for bid.
Okay.
And then another 134 that's being prepared to go out for bid.
So 450-ish, and then, so that gives me a rough number of 1,900 total. So does that mean that the 1,900 is all the dollars expended, or we still have dollars or ones to be put out to bid after these 1,900?
No, that, it's already been put out. We have, we're, this, this process, okay, the ones for the ARPA funds, that's complete. Those have already been out. We are invoicing, doing the final invoicing, so the work has already been done.
What do you mean? So 1,400, so all of the ARPA dollars are done?
Yes.
Because we were promised 2,200 under the ARPA dollars?
Okay. I'm not sure what you were promised, but I just know that...
I'm like, that's every news outlet in the city and some outside of the city that we, the 16 million, we're 2,200, and now you're saying it was only basically a little bit more than half of what was promised?
1,500 structures have been demoed for the city of Flint. 1,460 were residential, 46 were commercial.
Yeah, I'm understanding, and I'm just trying to figure out how we're so far upside down from 2,200 of what was promised when we gave the money versus, I'm gonna say 1,500.
It's basically cost. A lot of the costs did increase.
But we're, 700 structures light on what was promised, and we gave all of these dollars when most of the inflation had already incurred. Like, we were, they cost 50% more to demo these houses than what? I mean, because the residents were promised in roughly around 2,200 structures, and now we're throwing the towel in at 1,500. I think that's a 50% under promise.
Okay.
Wow. Wow.
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
I've been in a couple of meetings with the Land Bank and the administration, a couple of weeks ago, actually, I was in one. And I think that the, how, number of properties that are coming down is still the number that was requested, but it's that the bidding process goes out in chunks. And so my understanding from those meetings is that those number of houses are still coming down. It's, I don't think that it's quite clear on the funding, how they're billing out the expenses, but those are still coming down.
So do you have funding for 2,200? I'm not sure whether there's a question in there, but are you, do you guys have the funding for the 2,200?
That, I'm not sure. I can't answer that right now, but I'll check and find out.
Okay. Because I believe that with the ARPA that we gave and that MACH gave, like, I'm looking at the city press release, and this will fund demolition for 2,200 Land Bank properties. What was the, do you know, were the cost overruns that were 50% higher than?
I'm sorry.
What were the cost overruns that were 50% higher than expected?
That I don't know. That I don't know. I don't have that. But I can check and let you know, if that's okay?
I mean, I think this is gonna break some news that we're 700 properties short of what was promised, so... So you're saying that the average demolition was, if we only got 1,500, the average demolition was $10,000?
Yeah, that sounds about right. Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Well, I think you're breaking news tonight, and there's gonna be a lot of very, very, huh? 10 is not low. There's gonna be a lot of angry people. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you?
Hi. Pretty good.
I just, I guess my first question is this. The 1,500 demolitions that have taken place between the commercial and the residential, when we say that the money has been expended and you're finalizing invoices, is that only for the 16 million that we provided, or does that include the leveraged funds as well?
No, that's for the 16 million that you provided.
Okay, so there's another 40?
There's, yes, there is more, yes.
There's another 40, and how much of that is dedicated to the city of Flint?
That I don't have. A second, let me find it.
Okay. Because there, there might, it sounds like there may be more demolition to come.
Sorry about that.
So we haven't, we haven't expended the entire pot of money, including the leveraged funds?
Correct.
Okay. Now, was that pot of money 56 million or so? Was it all to be for demolition, or were there other maintenance in those type of allocations as well?
As far as I know, it was all for demolition.
Okay.
But 10% of that, of the 57 million, was out county. 90% of it was for the city.
And when, when we're talking about the demolition being complete in '26, that does not include the other 40 million?
Correct. That include, the funding that will complete by the end of '26 includes the additional 41 million.
So it does include the...
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just in my mind sort of adding things up. So over how many years have we been doing demolition with the ARPA monies? When did we, how?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm hoping you guys will have a better answer to that, because I'm not sure when they can...
I'm trying to understand if we've completed 1,500 over the last several years, how are we, is it likely or feasible that we can expend 41 million in demolitions?
What's your point of information?
Are you aware that the first demo that they did was April of 2013, of 2013?
2013?
No, 2023, my bad.
Yeah.
April of 2023.
So about 1,500 over two years, because, two and a half, because the 16 has already been expended. They're invoicing for that. I don't know if my, if my train of thought is making sense to anyone else, but I'm trying to, I'm thinking that it's gonna be difficult to expend 41 million in a year when it took 16 or two and a half years, 16...
Part of the 41 million is, has been expended. It's just all of it has not been expended. It's a total of 57 million altogether.
Okay. So these 1,500 demos, are those the total number of demos that you've done, or the total number that you've assigned to the city of Flint's ARPA dollars?
Those are the total that has been completed and assigned to the city of Flint.
And are, and the ARPA dollars?
Correct.
But not necessarily the leveraged dollars?
Part of it, yes.
Okay. I yield.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to answer the discussion? I'll go, I'll go ahead and take some time. And so you said it's only costing about 22,000 for you all to demolish homes? I mean, excuse me, 10,000 for you all to demolish homes?
No, I don't think I said that. Per house, I'm not sure. I can't find out. Per home.
Where'd I get that 10,000 number from you? Okay.
Cost per home.
Okay. But I would imagine, because I know that it costs the city a bit more than that to demolish homes. And so I'm just wondering if you know, if you run around or about the same amount that the city? You don't know? Okay. My next question is, obviously, the Land Bank, they have that new development downtown next, it was still downtown. And I'm just wondering, because in the past, one of the things that people have had issues with, which my colleague brought up, was people being able to purchase homes. And so I'm just wondering if you all are now in the development game, and people want to purchase lots where there's a lot of empty land, how are you doing that? I mean, because it would seem that the residents should still be able to purchase, purchase the land if they still want to purchase it. So how does that work?
We have applications that they can come and fill out to purchase property within the city. We wish more people would definitely do that.
So I do know, thank you for your answer. I do know that residents have tried and have been told if you're not adjacent to said lot, that you can't purchase it. And that also residents have been told that some lots were being held back for development. And so I just want to make sure that, let's start at the beginning. What is the motto of the Land Bank? Because I know initially, the Land Bank was not put in place to develop. And so how does this work now that the Land Bank has decided to be developers? Because there are a lot more stringent rules on how people can and cannot purchase property, and I just don't want the, it to be because of a competing interest that people are not allowed to purchase property.
Now, I think there's a misconception. The side lot program is specifically for homeowners to purchase adjacent side lot. But if someone wanted to purchase property that was not a side lot, they are able to do that, it's just, it's, they have to purchase it at market rate. They would not get the, because I believe the side lot is like less than $100 for that one adjacent property.
No, no, I'm talking about property overall. I'm not even talking about, because that was one of the reasons that I decided to use the term, that they were told that they had to be adjacent to it when there are, obviously there is a lot of land and the properties that people are not necessarily near, because you have blocks and blocks of property for the Land Bank.
Right.
And so, again, there have been people who were told that certain things were marked for development, and so they couldn't purchase. And so I'm just trying to understand how that works.
If they want to develop it, they're more than welcome to purchase it. But it's not, what it, okay, the way it is, if there's a, like, there's some areas of Flint where there's an entire block...
Correct.
...that's vacant. They're not trying to sell a lot, an individual lot, off that block to, they would prefer someone to come in and develop the entire block instead of just a small piece of it. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I understand exactly what you're saying, yes. And so is there like some, is there a discount that comes with me purchasing in a whole block, or am I just buying a whole block at full price, especially when I just might have only wanted the corner, or maybe I just wanted two of the parcels?
It is at market rate.
So no, no discount? And then, I know the answer to this, but I know a lot of community members, and congratulations on having 22 full-time crew. That's actually really happy, that's actually really good news. And then also with the 61 local maintenance people, that's good to hear as well, because one of the issues that we do run into is with Land Bank property. And I know you said that you all have 13,000 properties owned by the Land Bank, right? And I think you said 60% of that is in Flint? No, those were the, that was the demo numbers, but you have 13,000 owned by the Land Bank in the city of Flint. Right? And so I know that's a lot of property to keep up with, especially if you only have like 61 people or only 22 people doing something. And so what happens when you have Land Bank property where the trees are, you know, now growing onto someone else's fence or the brush or something, and it happens to be a problem for someone else's property? And sometimes residents are told that it will be taken care of, but then we're a year or two years out, and then it's still, they don't do the pass-through. And I understand why, you know, you may be limited to how many times a year you can, but what happens then?
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm...
So there, okay. Go ahead.
If that tree or whatever it is is about to damage someone's home, we will send someone out there, but there's...
Or like the fencing, because sometimes like it overgrows.
And some, some of those would be the responsibility of that homeowner.
If it's your, if you're...
Even if it's, okay, if there's a tree on the Land Bank property, and that tree, if that tree is going to fall, we will come out there and take care of that. But if that tree, if it's some limbs that's growing onto the neighboring property, it's the neighboring property owner that would have to take care of that part of that tree that's on their property. I know, I don't like it either.
Is there a reimbursement program if I'm taking care of your tree?
No, because they consider it, they consider it as you're taking care of the part that's on your property, and whatever's on your property would be your responsibility.
Understood, but here's the thing, it wouldn't be on my property if you were taking care of it. So if, you see what I'm saying? Not you, Karma, but Land Bank, the entity. So... Okay. And then I know that there are partnership opportunities with the community. I do want to give you an opportunity to talk about that, because the Land Bank does... I do want to give you an opportunity to talk about that because the land bank does, um, have a lot of good opportunities for partnership with the community. So if you want to take some time to just kind of talk about some of the programs that you all have.
Well, one of my favorite programs is the Clean and Green. The Clean and Green Program. And that's where residents are encouraged to participate. Resident groups, um, some of our council people are a part of that also. And they receive a stipend for maintaining each property. One full land bank property would receive a $25 stipend.
I want you to be able to finish. And Councilwoman Burns just walked in. Can we, um, do 10 more minutes? What does everybody think about that?
Motion to extend 10 minutes.
Thank you. Is there support for, moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Jatt?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, the Clean and Green Program is where we have community groups, church groups, neighborhood associations that maintain, um, at least 25 properties throughout their own individual neighborhoods. And they receive a $25 stipend per property. And this year, it seemed to work out pretty well. We had, um, majority of the North Flint was covered by these different groups. And that gave the land bank crews more opportunity to go through the entire city. And normally they get through the city once, maybe twice. This year, they were able to start a fourth go-around throughout the city.
That's, that's pretty good. Because I know normally they're only, may, may be able to do two. So that's pretty good. Did, I hear you corrected when you said there's a stipend provided for park adopters?
No.
No. Not park adopters, but excuse me, a lot of park, a lot of adopters, not park, lot of adopters.
Yes, the ones that are maintaining these properties through the Clean and Green Program.
Hmm. Okay. Um, so I don't think anyone else, I thought maybe, um, someone else might have wanted the floor. Councilman Alamein, do you?
I'll like the floor.
Alrighty.
Thank you. So, um, Ms. Lewis, a question for you. So I heard you talking about the trees that hang over the property. Now, what if we have dilapidated land bank property? Because we have a constituent, she comes down here constantly named April Stone. And a land bank property garage is leaning on her property and it's compromising her fence.
Have her to give me a call. I can give you the phone number to pass along to her.
Go ahead.
And I'll be able to work with her. 810?
Go ahead.
429? 26... Let me make sure I can give you the right number.
2674. Okay, thanks, thank you so much.
And that is for any City of Flint resident that has any question. Because I know a lot of them hear it. I'll repeat it one more time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alrighty, um, Councilwoman Burns, I know you said you didn't want the floor. Councilman Alamein, you also didn't take any time. So when she's done, it's open to you if you would like. Councilwoman Burns, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi Karma, how are you?
Pretty good, thank you.
Um, one quick question, because I know you are always readily available and you always take calls. And I appreciate that you do that. My question is something that is recent. The number, I am really concerned about the number of homeless people in these properties and the properties that they're setting on fire. Is there someone who is going around checking them? Because what I have learned with the ladies with the Color Law Coalition, literally picking up a, a homeless man. Tanya Jones gave her boots off her feet to a, a young lady, which I learned when they don't have shoes on, mostly those women are trafficked. But the, there are people living in those homes. I mean, literally places that I have ridden by. I have technically three on Ballenger. I have people living in, uh, a land bank property and it's near a food source because they eat out the dumpster. And so, um, and I, I think this problem is bigger than you, is bigger than council. It is literally something that has to be worked on together. But what is the policy? Because I almost feel like when you put them out, the shelters don't have room. So what, what, what is the land bank's policy on homeless people if they're living in the homes? Because I get it all the time when people say, oh, there's squatters living next door. And, but then too, and they tend to stay in homes which have natural fireplaces so that they can burn a fire for warmth. So what, what is the land bank's policy on, on that?
When I, when I started working at the land, before I started working at the land bank, I knew squatters was a problem. But once I started working there, I realized it's a bigger problem than I, I imagined. And people, what we are trying not to do is make this... Homelessness is not a crime.
Right.
And we've been, we've connected with the resources. We, we... I have connected with the resources that are out there in order to get these resources to people. We have not been evicting, legally evicting people because once we tell them that you cannot stay here, they leave. Whether or not they go to a different land bank property, that, we think that is really what's happening. They leave for one property and go to another. We've been working with GHS to get people help. So that's where we are right now.
So it is a big problem and the majority of these properties, um, as I, literally we went and the ladies have been going back feeding the homeless, which they're living, they're living. And literally they come out from places you don't even, it is unimaginable. It is a bigger problem than we can, than we, I ever thought. It's heartbreaking. And then when people live, their food source is a dumpster. And so, um, I will, will follow up with you. But that, that's, and it's hard when I get a resident say, well, there's squatters and I know the shelters are full, that they are not taking people. And then I had a conversation, um, Friday, which was, hey, you know, we, we will take the women and we'll take the, the children, but the men are kind of going to have to be on their own. And that's what I was told. They're out there, you know, and, and it's cold. And so, um, I will, I will follow up with you. And we'll have a, a conversation because the city needs to work with the land bank to develop a plan. We've got almost 400 churches here, um, to request the churches to open up their doors. Uh, you got to have a heat on anyways. You know, to open their doors, to allow them to come in. If we get one church for one, one day a week, that's, that only seven churches. You know, and, and if we can get volunteers. But our homeless problem is huge. And a lot of them, they know their land bank properties. And, um, it's, that, that was just my concern. And then also with the fires. Is, is the land bank, have they initiated or requested an investigation for all the arson fires? We were out feeding the homeless Rankin, Genesee Street, literally from McClellan to Hamilton, that square was just ablaze. I mean, there, every fire truck and then other, um, communities were there to help, other agencies. I mean, I have, has, is anyone initiating, hey, we need an investigation to find this arsonist?
Yes. Uh, we have a gentleman on staff. His name is Dewayne. He's been spearheading that particular effort.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Alamein. You are the final person who has not had a chance to...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't know if you wanted to.
Um, my only question, we, I get a lot of calls from residents, um, a lot of blighted properties and things like that. And a lot of times I, I work with the blight department, also work with you guys over at, uh, Land Bank, spoke with Nick, Michael, everyone. Um, a big issue though, what we running into is like if, if I reach out to the city and we find out it's a land bank property, they can't touch it. And then vice versa. Um, if I reach out to land bank, if it's a city property, they say they can't touch it because of policies. My question is, are you guys having any conversation to maybe coordinate that better? Regardless who owns the property, maybe put something in place so we can like just take care of the problem and get it done? Get the blight and things eliminated or properties boarded up where these burnt up, um, structures and things are?
No, I do know that the land bank and the city's blight department already work together. Um, if there's a property that the city is working on and there's a problem, a land bank property next to it that there's an issue, they will give us a call and let us know while they're there so we can work together on that. That has been happening.
I just think it definitely needs to be, um, a little more coordination because it's several. And we get this back and forth, residents to reach out and I'm trying to assist them. And it's like we keep running into these roadblocks. I don't know where it's like the ball is dropping, but definitely if you can look into that, greatly appreciate it.
Okay. You wrote my number down, give that number to... Now, Michael Freeman, he normally works with you guys, from what I understand. I tend to work with residents. So if you get tired of them calling you, give them my number. I'm here. And then I have, we have some new flyer, new flyers coming out. I printed a copy for you guys, so at least you can see them ahead of time.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. We do thank you so much, um, for coming in and speaking with council. This special order was per the city, excuse me, the council finance chair and myself. So thank you for your time. I do ask, um, because we're going to public comment, uh, there may be some comments that they want to make regarding that. If you could just stick around at least until after council response, that would be great. Thank you so very much.
First speaker is Ariel Mitchell.
Hello. Counsel, my, I'm Ariel Mitchell. I live at 759 East London Avenue. Uh, but for the record, uh, last week, uh, what, to, to you, Madam President, to Lavina, City Clerk, we had a scare last week because you, they said you was in, the little man downstairs sent me back to college to get some more education. And they almost broke up the form thanks to the third ward. She walked in, she didn't know about the, she saved the council meeting. And after the council meeting, she, about the land bank situation, what the lady just got you talking about, uh, it's a situation over there by, uh, uh, Golden Gate. A breakfast over there this morning. It's a house over there, it's a handicapped woman, six houses on the block. And the land bank called itself, punished the lady because she had trees growing through a little fence. And, and they sent two hour council ladies over there. But the, the slum landlords gave them a, uh, like jumped on them and they had to, they used their hand and they just noticed there. And what I hear, but this land, this lady land bank trying to take up for the people, they usually send them to court, give them a $250 ticket. And, and a tree over there and the, and the woman, and then Ms. Burns said she got to go to court. And, uh, yeah, she was one of them. But the fifth ward, the woman went over there first. Ms. Burns, no. And then, and the land banks called itself getting away with people's properties and putting them out. And they go, and then they're going to this house over in the east side, Ms. Priestley. And they become like them kidnapping people. All them living in the house and it, and certain peoples, put them out, don't make your money for them. Nobody saying nothing about it. Bad, put the peoples in, they call it, I can't, the name they call it for, I can't even call it right now. I don't know what that, but another thing, to you, Madam Chair, to the President, I mean, Lavina, down to you. I went after the, after the, you talking about the property in the middle of downtown Flint? I was tucking to a nightclub la, other night in the, and, but I was having such good time. The peoples of a color own it right in this town thanks to the land bank. But one of my councilmen, that, a big dock guy, I can't think, Woodson. He was in charge, but he had, I was enjoying myself. Had pretty women in there like you, but I hate them. And then, but I was concerned about the popo because Woodson going to get his leg back. You know, they coming by, spraying people with bear spray because they don't want to dock in here. But I found out the council lady left her phone in the car. And that's when I said, we got to go because, you don't know, I was going, and then, oh!
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, counsel. I'd like to address two issues. Number one, I would like to encourage the council to go on and pick leadership. We have too many issues that we're confronted with. And, um, I would suggest you consider Winfrey Carter as the senior councilperson on this council. Our previous leadership, our president and vice president, regardless of what the reasons were, they have communicated to this public that they have no respect for residents. We wish we would be treated like Ashley Capital representatives and community first and other big people that come down here. They don't get the police called on them. And none of that, even though the things that they ask for is to the detriment of the residents. But we come down here and pour our hearts out over the frustration through the experiences that we have had. And we get, the police called on us. We get arrested, we get put out, da, da, da. I think that is a reflection of the past leadership. Now let's give the senior councilperson a chance to not only lead this council and reset the, 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 the things that are done against residents. To put it on a new track, let's go into a new year with a new attitude. And perhaps the new leadership can help bring y'all together. That would be a, that would be something, wouldn't it? And, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, the failure of this council to have addressed the rate hike of the water back in February. And I did learn recently that the council didn't know about the meeting of GLEWA back in February, where it was the one item on the agenda. And GLEWA, as we know, we get our water from GLEWA. And they had a meeting, a public meeting, and it was only one item on the agenda. And that was to raise the water rates. And none of our council people were there to speak for us. And I learned recently that the council didn't know about it. So I would suggest that the council write a letter to GLEWA and make sure they let you all know about the meetings. And then we use an ARPA funds to pay for the raise in the water. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Last public speaker, Sarah Houston.
Good evening, council members. Sarah Houston, sixth ward. Um, just want to know, what's the process? I guess I still don't see interpreters here. You say that it's not in the budget or we got to put it in the budget. But I see resolutions for the budget and I may just be ignorant and uneducated. So I'm asking for, what's the process? How long is this going to take? What's the holdup? It's really a simple phone call. So I don't understand what's going on with that there. So please help me to understand that. I'd like to publicly acknowledge Arthur, uh, Woodson, who's not here today. I'd like to publicly acknowledge Arthur Woodson, who's not here tonight, for providing interpreters at his town hall that he had for cancer. And he didn't even talk to me about it, I just happened to see that on the news, so I was really proud to see that for him making that effort. I'm also concerned about the multiple fires that are happening in our city, the multiple killings that are happening in our city, and I'm wondering if there's anything being done to investigate an arsonist. There is an obvious arsonist in the city of Flint and that concerns and worries me. I don't really have too much more to say than that, other than, you know, I would like a response to what is the process on what's taking so long to make a simple phone call to get interpreters in. Thank you.
Ariel Mitchell.
Hello, Council. I'm Ariel Mitchell. I live at 759 East London Avenue in Flint, Michigan. For the record, about this food bank situation over out on Flushing, we the people don't appreciate you peoples giving away our offer money to, to the, they say, but just put it in the account. But, and then you want to refuse to give it to them because it ain't nothing but a money pot. You should have be like Salvation Army, gave about $650,000 back because they salvation. They supposed to do it because it's free, Salvation Army in Flint. And talk about $3,000 a truck. We got 25 trucks over there at St. Mike's and you got to pay the peoples for delivering the food and nobody, they can't figure out how to pay the truck drivers to deliver the food like in Africa. They got the food, but they put it in the middle of the desert, then when their peoples go out and get the food, they start to fight and kill each other and that what they mocking them for, that what they wanted to do. Fighting over food and the thing that's supposed to save them is killing them. Just like that was St. Michael's become a food desert and it's supposed to be all that junk and burning, you see they burning up the whole square neighborhood, nobody, and Chief Green, I like he don't see nothing, all that junk, just like over in New York, drunken mayor doing all that junk up, that strategy stuff and all that eastern side junk, talking about what he gonna do when he get president and all that, and everybody talking that junk up it, talking assalamualaikum junk. You know, that junk and everybody gonna be assalamualaikum bowing down to them, blowing towers down in New York again. I'll be back, talking about I'll be back, bin Laden, drunken camel jacket junk. Hello, Ms. Shak, say something about that. Yeah, like that old camel jacket come up and blowed up three banks in it, in New York and nobody say nothing about it.
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell.
What?
I'm gonna let you continue on your time, but I'm asking you refrain from using racial slurs. Please continue.
Oh, yes, ma'am. And another thing about the city clerk, Davina Danner, you, and she talking about the mayor is going to send her to get some more education before we must get this year out, she supposed to be inscribining that money out tonight and, and the excuse is, I'm getting educated. That's her excuse by the man, the little man downstairs. And who ever thought of such a thing? I think the second ward thought of that. Look at her over there. Now listen here, lady, you went to McDonald's today, I mean, council, council lady, McDonald's got a problem over there in the morning tab, they ran out of, they ran out of eggs and meat and they, they talking about, sorry sir, you don't get food we eat today. Do something about that, honey. In the ward.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
How do you follow that up? So a few things I wanted to discuss that I ran out of time with. The Coalition, or the Color of Law Coalition and Thanksgiving. These people do it with all their own money and donations from people. They went out and fed a lot of people on Thanksgiving Day with hot meals, with cold sandwiches for possibly the next day. So I want to give a shout out, I'd say to the girls, but I'm one of them now, so I can't say I'm the girl. But, you know, if you guys see it in your heart and you want to donate toward it, you know, their, their goal is to take care of the homeless or the unhoused, the drug addicts, giving them things like hats, scarves, socks, gloves, meals. We're trying to do some camping tents now and some sleeping bags. We have a homeless problem here in Flint. We have a drug problem here in Flint. Nobody will deny that. Like I told you, I wasn't here for the last few meetings, enjoying my vacation, but I want to say I'm happy that the North Flint Food Market opened up. I'm happy that another resolution come to give them some money. I was happy to see that. I wasn't in favor of it while they were still trying to build because it was many years in the works and who knew if it was going to open or not, but now that it opened, I wish them nothing but success. My only concern is there's a reason that was a food desert in that area and a lot of that has to do with theft. Hopefully they can combat that there, figure out some way to take care of that. The St. Mark's vote at the last meeting, I was very disappointed in the second ward councilwoman telling everybody, yeah, I'll work with this and we'll work through this and then to have you vote no. That was really disappointing. The current leadership, like I said in my first thing, I think is inadequate. They've proven over the last year and a half, almost two years, that they don't have that leadership quality. And like I said, I mean, based on seniority, let's give Winfrey Carter a try. I mean, it can't be any worse. And the last thing is, don't think that you haven't heard anything from INA for the culture that they went away because they haven't went away. You'll see something coming up soon. They're going to start fighting for the residents, but unfortunately Judd has to get through his court case, as far as I'm concerned, illegal court case, but, you know, we'll see what that holds.
Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Claire McClinton.
Again, I want to underscore the challenges that we face here in the city of Flint and across the country for that matter. The civil rights that we've enjoyed since, for years, is being jeopardized now before the Supreme Court. Pretty soon, the last vestiges of the Civil Rights Act is being challenged. Pretty soon, we're going to go back to Dred Scott.
Dred Scott decision.
The Dred Scott case, which said, a black man does not have any rights that a white man is bound to respect. Dred Scott, look it up. But we're also facing the issue of the working class and poor people don't have any rights that the rich people is bound to respect. That's where we heading now. And you all have an opportunity to try to reverse this dinosaur of, of humiliation, exploitation and oppression that's going on here in the city of Flint and elsewhere and you are in the position to change these things. We can come up here and just complain and appeal to your better angels and ask you to stand up for our people. Stand up for the residents. You work for us, we forget that. But when the well-connected in this city come up here, they get all the respect in the world. They never get put out. They never are told, how dare you ask for a $72 million tax waiver and things like that? That's all fine and dandy. But when we ask for $16 million for rehab homes so that we can get some of these homeless people out of these vacant homes, living in the shadows, they're not seen, they're not heard. And we've got to have a change in the leadership here in this city to even talk about these things. So I'm hoping again that you will consider Winfrey Carter, who's the senior, we not talking about this camp and that camp. You all outdid yourselves last time because you usually five and four and that time you was three, three and three. Wow! You don't, you done split yourself some more. So let's give her an opportunity to see, can she be a fresh face on the council to lead this council? Thank you.
Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Sarah Houston.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your responses back to me. Thank you, Ms. Mashak, for saying that you were going to lead the charge on Monday. I truly appreciate that. I think that you forget that I'm a sign language interpreter myself. This is my job, it's what I do. It don't cost that much. It don't cost, I did the math, actually, it, it's not going to cost more than $60,000 a year to provide interpreters for eight hours a week if y'all can get at least, you know, I said four hours on Monday, four hours, and I think that's a lot. I think that's doing, that's overdoing it, so don't give me that crap. I get so sick of people talking about it costs too much, but it don't cost too much to buy pens and paper and office supplies. These are people who need access to what's happening in their city and I am tired of that being your excuse. They're not that expensive. Again, this is my job, it's what I do, talk to people who don't know I know. Don't appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Last speaker is Rich Jones.
All right. Thank you.
Well, how y'all doing today? My song is over three minutes long, so I just play that late. But anyway, I left one of these up here, my flyer that I have. We're doing a fee 60 on Christmas Eve, I need some support. That's on the flyer and then also I'm doing a It Ain't Just You concert. I'm still going to do the No More Tears concert, but I decided being that this is going to be inside, I need to change the name and plus I had a dope design on the T-shirt, so I was like, I'm gonna go and change the name for this one, but the No More Tears concerts will be coming back again this summer, but I'm going to do this one on March the 14th and it's going to be entitled, It Ain't Just You. And I'm about to play y'all some lyrics from my opening act. Stop calling me.
Thank you. I believe you said...
Hello, I'm Ariel Mitchell. For the record, to you, Madam Chair, Candace Mashak, to the lady, Ms. Priestley, the one who got the money up, you passing out the money in Flint and don't want to, Ms. Priestley, I heard you say your, your mother on Thanksgiving Day took time out to cook you a turkey and talk about you can't do the business because after, the day after Christmas, and that's what's going on in Flint right now. At Flint Genesis, people's on strike, we're supposed to be taking care of sick peoples and stuff, and I want an investigation about that situation at Genesis. Is it because they moved from Flint out there and they don't know how to deal with Flint peoples who come in there because they be sick and they all want to, I want to, because my uncle, he was 67 years old, he stayed on Flint Park, I mean Flint, on Parkway Street. And then he, my auntie went, and then he moved out there on Cappan Road, right over there by that social security, I mean that thing right there, then my auntie come over there and took him out and put him in the hospital and he had a girlfriend and it wasn't nothing wrong with him. Then two days later, I went to see him, he was sitting up in the bed and he, and he died two days later, wasn't nothing wrong with him. And she jumped on me and told me, what y'all do to my, her man? My auntie still ain't, and she living, she moved in Grand Black Perry, made a white. And he was, my uncle's named Bobby Edwards, he worked at Hurley Hospital. And, but he, he dead now. And because, I want you to, I, they told me, the nurse that, she asked me how to get out there, I took a bus and I had to walk from the hospital down to McDonald's because the bus wasn't even must come so long, then all the lights went out. She said, I advise you not to come out here, sir, by yourself. And I still hear that stuff ringing in my ear and you talking about you can't do no business in Flint because of, after Christmas and after Thanksgiving. And what's with the, I just sound like them, the Middle East peoples, went to Israel and get sick and they gonna call this up, gonna deny them certain kind of medicine before they can die. And nobody, and the beat goes on. And Chief, what, Green ought to go out there and investigate that junk. His name is Bobby Edwards. He walked with a limp because a mule down south kicked him when he was, and broke his leg and got a medal in his leg, but wasn't nothing wrong. He worked at Great Giant sometime, one time. In the meanwhile, my other, his wife live on Rankin Street. Anyway, stay tuned, America, investigate that junk for me.
Next public speaker. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
First is the city secretary, I want to appreciate, let you know how loud you are and I want to say I appreciate that. Usually with Davina, you can't hear. So, I'm relatively speaking, when I talk about this, that, you know, my time on earth is short, what's left. I don't plan on dying anytime soon, but it's inevitable, I'm going to die one day. But I want you guys to know that I don't come here to this meeting for me. I come for my grandkids, for my children, for my other family members. I could just as easily sit at home and not be engaged, but I don't like the direction that the city is headed in. December 17th meeting, I was a little disappointed when I heard the vote to have everything go to Special Affairs and then have the council meeting. I kinda understand the reason for it, but why couldn't we've had all three committee meetings and then went straight to the council? It's the exact same thing. You're doing all this stuff from committees in the Special Affairs. To me, again, it looks like just an opportunity to limit the speaking of the public. So, you went from five chances to speak to two chances to speak. I would've rather seen four chances, but that's just my opinion. The paid holidays, uh, I'll address this again at Special Affairs, but I think they should just be aligned with the federal holidays. Whatever the federal employees work, that's what the city employees should work. You know, you're a government worker. There's plenty of times in my life that I had to go into work and dealt with nobody in eight-hour shift, but I had to because that was a requirement. Now, I could've, again, taken PTO and taken the time off. Councilwoman Johnson, I wanna thank you for taking time out of your schedule to help feed the veterans. I read on a post that you guys were in the North End area and feeding some veterans and stuff. Veterans are close to my heart. I'm a veteran myself. I did eight years in the Navy. And I think there's some of the most, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Almost like undeserving of people that do things for this country. So, veterans mean a lot to me, especially the homeless ones. And I guarantee you, some of those homeless we got in Flint are definitely veterans.
Madam Secretary. Last speaker is Claire McClinton.
Yes, I just wanna reiterate that we're getting into a new year. This council need to come together and address the needs of the residents. And I spoke earlier about how mistreated and demeaned and humiliated that we have felt over these last several months. Put the leadership of this council as a resident is just embarrassing. And here we are, a city known for its social justice character, and to be treated the way some of us has been treated is just inexcusable. Whatever the reasons that was for this, let's set that aside and go on and let Jerry Winfrey Carter give her an opportunity to address this residence, the needs of the residence, and maybe, just maybe, God forbid, unite this council. Unite this council with new leadership. Give her that opportunity. And I wanna speak to the situation about giving a day off for employees and with all due respect, Ms. Priestley, your family member was an essential worker. I don't think she's talking about essential workers. So, let's just sit back and try to do what's right for humanity. Financially, it may or may not work, but let's try to continue to stand up for the human condition, for human dignity. And again, we as residents who pay the bills around here, uh, remember? Uh, do, we pay the bills? Y'all work for us? Y'all, y'all act like you working, we work for you. No. You work for us. And Flint has a reputation of being a humane, social justice community. And we wanna see that reflected in the decisions that's made down here, and we do not see that. So, what we gotta do is try to do, it's not who, who is, it's not the who, it's the what. What do we need to do in terms of electing leadership that's gonna turn the page and push the issue forward? Push our issues forward. Thank you.
The next speaker is Stanley Wood.
Thanks for the 10th Ward Councilman over there. Couple things. The Ordinance 250414T, um, I kind of agree with Ms. Priestley here. This should be a thing that, uh, if somebody wants to take these days off, probably should use their PTO for that. Federal, federal government employees don't get that time off. We're also trying to choose, um, to give some people this benefit, but not others. We're talking about making this be the building downtown here to give these people the oppor- opportunity, and I don't think that's right. Then the special order discussion about sign language, uh, it's definitely needed. I wanna share, uh, something I thought was interesting that I seen online today, that a lady that came here to the City Hall to do some business, and on her way out, she thought she'd stop and get a water filter, 'cause you know our water ain't safe. She asked for it. The lady asked her for her ID, took all her information down, and told her, "Go out there and grab a box under the Christmas tree that says Merry Christmas." She opens it up, and it's water filters. What the hell is going on there? And ironically, the picture was, or the wrapping paper was of a Grinch. That was really fitting. Arson, obviously, we know it's a big problem around here, and, uh, in my opinion, I think one of the councilmen was making a joke, or councilwoman, said, "Okay, the evidence is here, now what?" with googly eyes. Maybe that person could get ahold of her arsonist person and find out if he's doing any of these. I don't know. But arson is a serious problem here in Flint. And then for the people that believe that the first ward councilman is innocent until proven guilty, he should be, uh, having his trial by now, but his lawyer's trying to find a better deal. You don't find a better deal for somebody that's innocent. You find a better deal so they do less time in prison or plea bargain down to, you know, just a misdemeanor or something like that. Just my opinion.
The next speaker is David Peche.
Yeah, Dave Peche from the 4th Ward. I wanna make some comments on the Land Bank. The Land Bank is the biggest ripoff this city's ever seen, and they're getting away with it. I live in the east side. Every other house has been burned down. Whole corner's burned down, right foundations, all is there. During this summer, they'd come over, and there's a practice over there, what they do, be on a corner lot, there'd be maybe two, three houses that burnt right down. They'll take one house, in the middle maybe, and clean it all up, then leave the two vacant... they're right there with the heavy equipment, they could get all three of them, or two of them, one of them. They leave them corner lots a mess. They haven't improved the neighborhood. They've cleaned up some of them, made it look good. And she knows what I'm talking about. She don't say nothing, but she knows what I'm talking about. And it's so bad, they haven't improved a damn thing over there. There's houses that's been burnt for 10 years, still sitting there on a corner lot, but the house, you know, 100 feet away, they clean up. But the neighborhood still looks bad. People wanna buy them properties, but would you buy a property if the lot wasn't cleaned up? I don't care how nice one is next to it, you can't build anything, you can't sell it, but it doesn't improve the neighborhood. I've seen that equipment over there sit, big bobcats, uh, backhoes, everything, sit on a lot for a week, maybe even longer. I seen these trailers come in, it's gotta haul all this junk away, double trailers, but they only fill one, then they pull away, then come back, you know, two, three hours later. We're paying for all that stuff. It's gotta be costing unfortunate to leave equipment sitting around like that. But my point is, they're not improving the neighborhood. It looks like they're doing something, but they're not. Matter of fact, they're burning more houses down. They just burned another one down yesterday on Franklin, on Davidson Road. There's no end to it. And you talk about squatters, leave them squatters in there and burn the house down. They're the ones causing the problem. Yesterday, I was driving by one on Bennett. Don't sit there and laugh, there's a vacant house sitting there, been sitting there for years and years. It's been pretty nice. Well, I caught two black guys coming out of there yesterday with all the wiring. They stripped the wiring off. And I said, "We stripped another house," and they told me to get, you know, whatever. But I see this, right next to that house, they cleaned two lots out, and they drive all the way from Bennett right down to the Broadway. They've created a road to go from one place to the other. Nobody stops them. Land Bank owns that property, now they should be responsible for it. And it's just bullshit. Just, just come over there and see it sometime. I got pictures right now on my phone.
Mr. Peche, can we stop this time, please?
That they fell right down.
Mr. Peche.
They have fallen right in. They've been sitting there for at least five minutes.
Mr. Peche.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sister Audrey Bahamut.
He's funny, pretty funny. Um, good evening. Couple of things that I would like to, um, address. One is, um, and I will be following up with the Flint City Police Department. I filed a complaint on October the 31st. I know officers are here from harassment from an officer who came here in the council chambers and harassed other people, but he was at my house. I did contact Councilwoman Tanya Burns about it. Haven't heard no follow-up from the sergeant who took the, who took the complaint, 'cause he found out that the officer didn't have his camera on him, period, nor did he have his camera on. Couldn't find any, um, tracking or anything from his body cam. But I showed him on my house cameras where this officer was in the driveway, and I addressed him by his name. So, the sergeant probably haven't contacted me, 'cause they probably trying to figure out a way to cover it up. So, I will be following up with that, but I just wanted you all to know that, that Flint City Police, I do not okay or agree with you all getting any more money till you start handling properly the citizens of Flint and taking care of them. Number two, council slip sits back in the back. How come there's only five being put out? Is that even legal? That's a question for the legal team? Why are you all only putting out five and trying to limit the citizens of Flint from coming up and voicing their rights to complain or their concerns? You don't put out slips five at a time. You put the slips out, and then when they get through and they're gone through, then that's one thing. Then you take them up. But put the foot five out at a time, it's like you trying to control the citizens of Flint. Remember, it's the citizens' tax dollars that's paying your salaries. And then to address the arson? That's a big problem. But, the city police, wasn't they giving a camera footage of the gentleman who burnt up St. Mark's and still haven't followed through with it? What are you doing, Flint City Police Department? You all have to do better by the citizens of Flint. Let's be real. If we got a arson on the loose, you all know, and it's probably cameras around, 'cause when, um, when that, when the campaign headquarters burnt down, there were cameras around there on the churches. There was cameras on people's houses, and did anybody go to those houses and demand the cameras? You're demanded if you wanna go and get information and see who's selling drugs or who's doing whatever they wanna do around there. You'll go ask for that camera footage, but no one went and asked for the camera footage? There's a house right across the street from that campaign headquarters, and they were never asked for the camera footage.
Next speaker is Rich Jones.
How y'all doing today? This thing's something been on my mind for a long, long time, and that's the three minutes that we are allowed to speak. Because, you know, I often talk to members who used, residents rather, residents of our city, who used to frequent this, uh, city council chambers, when it used to be a whole lot of interaction between the city council and the residents of Flint. And they told me that it was once a time where a resident would come up here and say something, and it would actually be interaction between that resident and the city council. And something else that is crazy, y'all only have two minutes to address this. And I talked to my sister, Ms. Claire, last, last, uh, Wednesday, and I said, "You know what? Me and you, we going neck to neck on coming up to the lecture and not get none of their two minutes." But you would give somebody that bring props two minutes, somebody that just has really nothing to do with city business to keep it real, far as improving the quality of life for the residents. And I just ask that y'all really start putting the residents first. A lot of y'all decisions are personal decisions, not what's best for the residents. That gotta stop. Before I end, I am in need of some help. Donald Trump had hit me too. Normally, I'll put out enough money to get 150 tee shirts with color designs that I like. This time, the 150 turned into 100, and the color designs dropped down to black and white. So, I appreciate y'all. And also, I got my Fee 60, that's coming up, Christmas Eve. Still need donations to make sure that's gonna happen. And then on March the 14th, we have our It Ain't Just You concerts that's coming up. So, just remember my cash app, and it's capital U, capital F, capital T, capital L, and that stands for United Flint Through Love. Thank you.
The final speaker for this meeting is Tanya Jones.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Jones, the advocate for my son that's part of the opioid crisis. And here to say, now, coming here for the opioid crisis, I'm not trying to save everybody. And the Bible says everybody's not a chosen one. So, when I'm out here with the homeless and we're all together trying to help the people, I know the houses, I've been pointing out, we've been pointing out to the houses, the spots, the potholes where they at. And I wanna just play something, 'cause we going out here, today is one of the homeless boys, young man birthday, Chris' birthday. So, when we leave here, we wanna see him. And I'm not saying like drug houses, that's for the cops to do, it's not even for us to do. We just trying to feed him, find out, you know what I'm saying, why they can't, why they don't wanna go to the shelters. So, I wanna take this time and play this message. This is one of the young men out there. Money, yeah. So, you need to tell me what's going on, if you don't feel like it, if that's, you prefer to be out here, but they, you know, they treating you like shit, just wasting. You human still.
So, it's just, uh, I ain't go to the center of hope, we could really start in the center of hope. A guy had a sexually assaulted me in my street, and I beat him real bad.
Shut the fuck up.
And then they ended up letting an asshole stay there after they banged me, and nobody stood right up for me, not Miss Mary, not the staff that was there tonight and happened. So, it's kinda like, uh, it never, it never existed.
Oh, it exists. No, no, it exists. Well, you got my... No, no, you should. You understand, you gotta protect yourself. And even if you are, you're like, it's, that shouldn't happen. No. So, no, you understand, you protecting yourself, 'cause you know what happened to you. You understand, and I can see every time, you and your son mine, you know? Well, you got my number, call me tomorrow. So, my point is, is people out here hurting. Everybody's not on drugs. I meet people, my son is on drugs. So, everybody's not on drugs. Circumstances happen. Some people can lose their job. Depression is real, mental health is real. So, I'm saying, whatever you guys out here, you know what I'm saying, would y'all take that serious? My main focus was my son, but like I said, I'm working to save. Everybody don't have nobody to advocate for him. So, I'm not trying to be out here like I just look for the council, make sure in November next year, you know what I'm saying, make sure you get out here and vote, make some changes, and it's about the people. Have a good night.
It is 6:43 PM, and I am calling this meeting to order in accordance with Flint City Charter Section 3-201 for the purpose of the organization of the city council. First thing we will do is a roll call. Ms. Alameen? Mr. Alamein.
President.
Dr. Lewis.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Priestley.
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in.
Present.
Ms. Burns.
Present.
Ms. Mishat.
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Present.
Mr. Jarrett.
Present.
You have eight members present. So, the organization of the city council starts with the vote for council president. And the city council shall elect from its members a presiding officer who shall be known as the president of the city council. As always, I will call each member's name and you will state the name of the member that you wish to elect as the president of the council. At the meeting held on November 10th, the council went five rounds before they moved on. Meeting held on November 24th, the council went 15 rounds before they moved on. So, today would bring us to round 21. And that's where we're going to start, where we left off. And the next person to vote for president would be Ms. Mishat. So, I will start with Ms. Mishat.
Candace Mishat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Judy Priestley.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamein. Dr. Lewis.
Lydell Lewis.
Ms. Johnson.
Dr. Lydell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley.
Candace Mishat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
That is two votes for Ms. Mishat, one vote for Ms. Priestley, two votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, one vote for Mr. Alamein, and two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round 22. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamein.
Candace Mishat.
Dr. Lewis.
Lydell Lewis.
Ms. Johnson.
Lydell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley.
Candace Mishat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mishat.
Candace Mishat.
There's three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mishat, two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round 23. Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamein.
Candace Mishat.
Dr. Lewis.
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson.
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Priestley.
Candace Mishat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mishat.
Candace Mishat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Ms. Mishat, two votes for Dr. Lewis. Round 24. Mr. Alamein.
Lydell Lewis.
Dr. Lewis.
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson.
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Priestley.
Candace Mishat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mishat.
Candace Mishat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
There's three votes for Dr. Lewis, two votes for Ms. Mishat, three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 25. Dr. Lewis.
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson.
Dr. Lydell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley.
Candace Mishat.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mishat.
Candace Mishat.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamein.
Candace Mishat.
That's two votes for Dr. Lewis, three for Ms. Mishat, and three votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter. Round 26. Ms. Johnson.
Dr. Lydell Lewis.
Ms. Priestley.
Candace Mishat.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mishat.
Candace Mishat.
Mr. Pfeiffer. Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamein. Dr. Lewis.
Leon Alamein.
That's one vote for Ms., Dr. Lewis, two votes for Ms. Mishat, two votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, three votes for Mr. Alamein. Round 27. Ms. Priestley.
Candace Mishat.
Ms. Burns.
Winfrey Carter.
Ms. Mishat.
Candace Mishat.
Mr. Pfeiffer. Mr. Jarrett.
Winfrey Carter.
Mr. Alamein.
Jarrett.
Dr. Lewis.
Dr. Lewis.
Ms. Johnson.
Dr. Lewis.
That's two votes for Ms. Mishat, two votes for Ms. Winfrey Carter, two votes for Mr. Jarrett, and two votes for Dr. Lewis.
Madam, madam clerk.
Ms. Priestley.
Like to make a motion to postpone this vote until the next meeting on the 17th. Support.
Ms. Priestley has made a motion supported by, I'm sorry, Ms. Burns, to postpone the organization of the city council until the regular council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 17th. We'll take a roll call on that motion. Mr. Alamein.
Yes.
Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Priestley.
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Mishat.
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
No.
Mr. Jarrett.
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no. So, the organization of the council will be postponed until December 17th and we will move on with the rest of the council agenda. The first speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Hello, I'm R.L. Mitchell. About the consumer powers, the dude didn't get up and talk for the chief, the fire chief, retired fire chief, because the consumer powers done closed the people's, on Quest Street, closed them down and charged them all that. That's enough of that riffraff. I'm gonna talk about, uh, the situation, what happened in a little while ago with the peoples downstairs. They act like this is the end of the year and now they just finally come upstairs and address them, gang violence, shooting and shooting, bullets going through the walls and killing babies. And, and the lady talking about she was disturbed, the reason why she didn't get it done because, because the president, because it was a shutdown for the, the president shut down stuff and they blaming it on Joe Biden. Joe Biden had no problem giving 20 other cities $200 million, but they ain't said nothing about Flint. And then, you don't have to pay it back. The peoples downstairs always trying to get away with the money like Ms. Fields. I mean, like Ms. Priestley over there, talking that riffraff stuff. And, and another thing about, I get tired of that, about, uh, yeah, Madam Burns. I went through the same situation Madam Burns went through about that, turning in that telephone to the, the city clerk. When I was trying to enjoy myself in the middle of downtown Flint, I was with the third ward council lady and when I realized around about 1:30, we were somehow having such a good time in the middle of downtown, she said, where my phone? And then she went in the car and I figured, I better get her home because everybody wondering where she at. You know, that's a, so I like to be know, you know what happened to that phone, uh, when the woman turned it in? And then one another situation happened like always getting Ms. Burns trapped in a situation like she can't even get it out. She always get out of her situations and all that, like Watergate and stuff. But in the, in the big, yeah, I was enjoying myself. Like I said, the big Woodson done bought a whole club down there and built it up real fast in the middle of downtown and had black security guards, but the one that took a shot at Woodson, he didn't show up because Woodson gonna get his shot back no matter what. Woodson ain't no joke. You know, the dude pushing it, Woodson right in front of everybody thinking he gonna get away. But another thing about Happy New Year in America, and another question for the record, what about them lions on New Year's? I mean, on Thanksgiving Day? How about that? Them lions and, okay, and another thing, but Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and, and graduation for them two turkeys, the president pardoned, but he ain't pardoning people's coming overseas with that dope money. He shoot them out of water like, like he wanna do to Flintstones. We the people like over on Golden Gate, that's where it all started from. Watch and see what Trump gonna do when he come to Flint. He gonna be just like Ms. Priestley, shoot up, kill all the homeless peoples in the house like that dude say, blow them up and up, all that.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Mitchell. Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
First, Councilwoman Johnson, safe travels. Hope God give you the strength to get through all this. I know it's tough. Tomorrow, December 9th at 11:00 AM in front of Judge Pickle, we're gonna have Alamein versus Johnson PPO hearing. I think that's probably his 10th one that he's gotten on people. It'll probably go just as far. Special discussion about the sign language interpreter. I see we forgot that too. Or did we forget it? Maybe we're just gonna blow smoke up Sarah Houston's butt. But she wasn't here today, so they didn't have to worry about it. Let's go on to something more important. Imagine if you will, a culture or a, a group that tries to change the nation, that looks at things like given, getting, loving, and living. Well, guess what? That culture's coming to Flint. That culture's coming to the United States, but it's coming to Flint. Flint will be the second chapter for the culture, INA. And you guys will be surprised who our chapter president is gonna be. No, it's not gonna be me. But it's somebody I have a lot of respect for. Things are gonna change around here, you know? It's gonna take baby steps, but eventually things will change. We'll do what we gotta do, but we want to make Flint better, but we want to make the whole nation better. I guess that's pretty much it, you know? If everybody can be there to support Ms. Jackson tomorrow in court, I believe it's something that she needs support for. I actually gave toward her legal fund for that. So, I believe in her stating her points and I don't believe she should be silenced by somebody that says they're afraid of her when you know damn well, he ain't afraid of her. If anything, she should be afraid of him. I mean, she's not walking around carrying guns and trying to evict people, so.
Next speaker is James Moore.
Good evening, council, residents that come out. I hope you can hear me. I'm gonna try to do better coming up in '26. I'm a Democrat, pled and delegate. I need some help. They got 35 positions available in Flint and I went through last year by myself, so that's 34 positions that I'm asking. If you want to be able to say something on behalf of being a citizen and the citizens of Flint, coming up in '26, we got 36 positions that we need to fill. I'm gonna run again, I don't know if I'm gonna get it or not, but if you don't get involved, your words don't get heard. If you don't come down here, your words don't get in heard. If you don't stand up and call, you ain't gonna get no police help. So, we gotta take some responsibility on ourselves as a community to get involved and do other than just complaining. You know, you gotta, you gotta step up, we gotta stand up. God knows, we done been through everything and God done delivered us through it, but our people have to step up. We gotta step up, we gotta get things done. That's all I have to say for tonight.
The next speaker is Deion Freeman.
Good evening, city council. Got a couple of questions and y'all may have talked about this with the grant extension budget for the year '22. That was Resolution 250389T. Was that program to go for three years, five years? Because this is saying 2022, I just don't know if that was the name of the grant. Why is it still from 2022 and we're in 2025? It might be because this is a three-year program or a five-year program, so that's part of the question. Also, there are three resolutions on here to give monies to RECAST. Love RECAST. RECAST is here every year. But guess what? Just like I've been telling plenty of people, I'm tired of money being spent on meetings after meetings after meetings after meetings. We go up, we learn something new and fun and fancy, and then we go back to our regular program station. What is actually going to change or what, what measurables do these three entities give you all to follow up to say that what we've been doing is making a change? Everybody knows about ACES now. Everybody knows about being trauma informed, but we know, what do we do afterwards? Where is some additional help for people who have learned about these things that go through counseling or some other training? Something deeper than the same old program, year after year after year. It's a total of $727,277 being given to three different entities to do RECAST. That's Genesee Health Systems, Greater Flint Health Coalition, and the Crem Foundation. Love all those entities. We do, you know, there's great things going on, but when are we gonna have some definable measurables where we can see that it is actually making a change in the people's lives whose money is being spent on? So, I think that's all of my question. Hopefully, we can get something measurable, they can give you something measurable that you can bring back to us and let us know on a follow-up or have these entities come back and give a presentation to tell us year after year what is actually taking place besides passing out stuff and t-shirts and buttons and just another meeting that isn't doing anything other than another great meeting. Thank you.
Speaker is April Stone.
Good evening. I'm addressing this council once again about my water situation. I have a leak from the water valve, that shut-off valve that comes to my house, and it has flooded my basement and ruined everything in my basement, my carpet and my furniture, everything. Now, I was here at a meeting and I heard them asking for a half a million dollars for some stuff because the water meters weren't any good. But they came out to my house and told me that I gotta pay them $250 upfront before they can replace the water meter that they already know ain't no good. And they came out and told me that they didn't know how to repair it, they'd never seen a problem like that and all they could do was pack a nut. If they know these things ain't no good, why would they try to tell me I have to pay them for a part that they put in my house? And they forced me to put it in and told me if I didn't let them put, this was the third meter that they had put in my house, and that if I didn't let them replace it, they were gonna turn my water off. Now, they come up here and ask y'all for a half a million dollars for some stuff that they know ain't no good, but yet I gotta pay for some stuff that ain't no good that they don't know how to repair. I don't understand it. I also have a prob, I, 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 I wanna reiterate on that. I, I, I wanna reiterate on that because the young man that came out, he said he had never seen that before, and they don't know how to repair them. Well, if they don't know how to repair them, and they know it's some junk that they put in people's house, why do I have to pay for some that's some junk anyway? And then I heard that they were here on Land Bank before I got here today. I've been complaining about a garage that's falling over on my land from Land Bank. The first time they cut the grass, a good, a good cut, was this year and the first, the first time in 10 years. They, they know the house is falling down. They know the garage is leaning over my fence, and it's no, it's not even 10 feet from my house. I don't wanna be responsible and have my insurance pay for something that they put on emergency list to be torn, demolition four years ago, I think it is now. Raul was out, and we did a cleanup in there.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
That was a fast three minutes.
The next speaker is Beverly Biggs Levy.
My name is Beverly Biggs Levy. I live in the Third Ward. Leon, how many PPOs you gonna put out on folks? You doing Kiki mama? Keek, your girlfriend's mama? I'd be shocked if you win that tomorrow. I really would. It's sad, and you guys go along with him. That's the even saddest part. LaShawn, why would you want Nadia to be the president? You don't... If you look at the council, she been a horrible president for the last two years. And LaShaw ain't no better. If y'all gonna do something, why don't y'all do it with the oldest person, as if it was a union? Jerry is the oldest person, but y'all do what you wanna do. But it's only... 2026 ain't very far. So we ain't gotta worry about that much more. But we need a change. When are you gonna find out that Leon don't live on my street?
They don't.
Davina? You said it would only take 30 days. It's been well over 30 days.
Whoa!
That was in August. September, October, November, December, four months done went by. You say that you working at it. It don't look like you working very hard at this. This is ridiculous. He don't live there. Then he live down the street from Tanya, because he put the PPO on Ms. Jackson on Tanya Street. So, and he sitting up burning up these buildings like it's, if not allegedly, because how can you burn up a building that the light and gas is cut off? The insurance don't pay on light and gas cut off when you burn up a building. Y'all better wake up. Y'all looking at this criminal. And y'all think it's nothing. You hold your head down because you ashamed. You are purely ashamed of what you guys are doing. If y'all keep him in that seat, well, next year, he'll be in the Third Ward. He won't be in the First. At the rate they going with that mayor, I don't know. Have a blessed day.
The final speaker for this meeting is Tanya Jones.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Jones, advocating for my son, which brought the opioid crisis. First of all, I wanna say I greatly miss Eric Mays. Eric Mays taught me about the medical pickups when it comes to my son, and I watched him. That's how I found out about the council. And again, I miss Eric Mays. So I wanna say, I know my opinion don't matter, but Candace should not be president at all. But I see at all she not be, should be the president because she went to church with my son Ebenezer, and with him fighting what he's fighting. My father from Black Lives Matter should be assisting me and somebody that he went to church with. So integrity, all that comes together. I'm out here fighting. No, I didn't go to Ebenezer because I thought, I didn't think it was strong enough for me. But my son chose there. I give him freedom of choice because he's 31 years old. He's autistic, but still, just like somebody else on council's son is autistic, when you learn as they get older, you give them freedom of choice. I raised him to the best of my ability, but he has choices. But I'm his mother, so I'm an advocate, and when he mess up, I have three of them. If they mess up, I'm his mother. I'm gonna do what's best for him. Another thing, I see they got his five votes. Neely has his five votes today. So the council is open like the circus. So guess what? But God is real. So right now, as you can see, the council has its five votes. I can clearly see that. So whatever happens, people gotta remain strong and understand God is real. So what they see right now might happen, guess what? Some things bad gotta happen for the good. Because just like me standing here today, if my son didn't go through what he was going through right now, I wouldn't have met the people I have met. I have not, I wouldn't have found out what goes on council. So sometimes, sometimes things have to have the bad for the good. Because in the end, you gotta remain strong and know that God is real. Another thing, Judy, 1655 Ohio. Please, before the year is over, would you please check on those people? You say there's so much that you can do. You stand right there. I see the photo ops or whatever you have with the, with the mayor. Please check on those people. If I was in position, guess what? My job, I would check on them. They're paying their rent to a house that's condemned by the state. So I need you to do that. And these people, I know where the drug houses at. I know where the homeless at. When I leave here, I'm gonna check on them. It's not my place to do the police job. So these houses, they're not burning down these houses. The arson not burning. When somebody's homeless, they're sitting there. When I go see them, they're at the same place. So my thing is, y'all make sure y'all check on the homeless, run the grant money or whatever you do. That's another topic too. So y'all have a good night and be blessed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and to all of the council persons that are here today. Thank you for your service. And I just wanted to have some words about what's happening in the city in regards to fires. We've had a rash of fires all throughout the city of Flint, and it is wearing on our troops as well as our fire trucks with this cold weather that we have. And all of the vacant properties, we're getting a lot of homeless people that are in these houses. One died last night at a fire, and it's unfortunate, but they are starting the fires. Saturday, we had a fire on Kansas where there, there was a family in there that was burned, probably third, fourth degree burns on their bodies, and now they are clinging to life in the hospital. And so we are running night and day chasing these fires. That's just the homeless. What we've done for the homeless with the city administration and the fire department, we have 150 spaces for homeless people throughout about six different shelters in the city of Flint. We have 150 areas where these folk can go and get warm and get food, and we have set the rules that they can stay in those places safe. In the event of arsons, we have a person that's been trained by the state of Michigan and also the police department that is a certified police officer, and we call him out to do arsons and investigations, and also the police accompany him to do the arson investigations. Arson is the most easiest crime and very easy to conceal because it's done mostly in the dark of night. And most of the houses that are burning are vacant and dilapidated property. But what I would ask this body, I feel that people love watching the city council either on your TikTok, either on your Facebook, and whatever media that you guys display. I would ask that a lot of the rhetoric and the irresponsible things that you're saying over your network has a great effect of people starting fires. And what's happening is, we have a crew, a young crew, about 50 young firefighters, and it's wearing them down. It's tearing up our trucks. Because just the minute when speech in this chamber goes out against, nobody is doing arson investigation, nobody is doing anything, which is not true, and if that was said by me, it was a mistake. Because we do, from the firefighters, we all go out and deal with investigating these fires. Do we find some? Not really. We have a person that's being arrested or was arrested for arson. He was in a vacant house, living there, and he did start a fire, and we did catch him, and he's being prosecuted. And we are glad to have that, but most of the arsons go without being prosecuted because there's no one to do it. And believe it or not, when you take a case over across the street, the prosecutor wants to know the value of the property. If there's no value to the property, then they're not gonna spend the time and the effort to try to put someone in jail because there's no value to the property. So the science of it all, we all need to work together. We all need to work together. I wanna thank this council again, how you have, through the years, supported the fire department. You have supported us, and I think every time we come to ask, you guys support us. Because of your support, we ran 4,000 ambulance calls. We've saved those lives, 4,000, and we brought that money to the city for those responses. So we're doing all we can, and anything we can do any better, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. And I would like to extend this.
Madam Chair.
Um, I heard Ms. Priestley first, and then was that Mr. Pfeiffer or Mr. Jarrett?
So, Chief, just, and you, I've said this to you very loud and clear, that if we have arrested somebody, we need to make a big deal out of that. We need to show that we are serious about prosecution of arsonists and what they're doing to the city. And I also understand that many of these structures are going up because they're, they are cold, and they're hungry, and they're feeding themselves, and they're heating themselves up. I was driving down Woodrow the other couple of weeks ago, and I've said this before, and I saw people running from the home that was fully engulfed. And I was told by a neighbor that people had been living there, and so I assumed they accidentally set it on fire trying to keep warm.
To your, to your point, and if they're running out of that fire, and they started a fire just to keep warm, that's a sad occasion. And to arrest them and bring them to jail for arson, there's nothing valuable that's burning. Those houses are open and accessible. Land Bank doesn't do their job to compact them together so they can't get into them. Even our Flint schools. Our Flint schools are wide open. I understand, and I applaud their accomplishments, but they have a lot of work to do.
But we need to make a big deal out of catching someone who is, who are, of, someone being charged with arson. We need to make it a big deal to show that we are serious about prosecution. And I bet maybe a deterrent, it may not be, but we need to make that loud and clear. I'm gonna say it again, because I feel strongly that this is the only way we're going to be able to start limiting the number of arsons in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Chief, thank you for your presentation. What, have you have, do you have any evidence on who is starting these fires?
Evidence, meaning that...
Do you have any leads on who is, who is starting any of these fires?
No.
No, you don't. So you come up here and you spew out asinine comment that, that we are causing these fires.
I mean, I didn't hear you. Can you say that again?
I said you have zero evidence and zero leads on who is doing these fires, but you come up here and spew an asinine comment that the rhetoric on this council is causing people to start fires. Now, how, how ignorant is that? That, that makes zero sense.
First of all, to answer your question, Mr. Pfeiffer...
What proof do you have that anybody watching it...
We do have evidence, and they are in jail as we speak.
Because, and they said that, oh, I got, I got inspiration from watching a city council meeting, so I went out and burned a...
Their, their reason for starting a fire is between the investigators. We don't come out and display why people started a fire. That's up to the prosecutor, that's up to the police and the court system.
So obviously, somebody said that they watched the city council meeting and said, "I went and started a fire."
I didn't say that.
That's exactly what you said.
You said that.
No, that's exactly what you said.
You said that.
That's exactly what you said. You said that, that the rhetoric on this council is making people go out and start fires.
I said, I appreciate, I said... Are you gonna deal with him?
Man, yeah. Um, RL. RL.
RL, please.
Please have, I, I, I will take, RL, would you please have a seat? I'm bringing you to order.
That's just irresponsible comment.
And, and, and hold on, and let me say, um, go ahead. Let's stop, stop the time. We gonna stop the time. I wanna make sure that this is a respectful dialogue. We don't want this to be argumentative per the rule.
You accused us of being arsonists.
No.
No, no, no. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Excuse me, the chair's still cheering. So I wanna make sure that this is not an argumentative dialogue. So let's make sure that we just reel in, and let's talk respectfully amongst one another, especially with the chief. So let's go ahead, and can you put it back at like, like two minutes? Probably when, when it got a little loose?
No, no, move that far. I mean, move that far back.
Well, no. All right, well, just in case somebody has something else to say. So, um, go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'm done. I don't, I don't...
Okay.
You accused us of being a councilman.
Okay, thank. All right.
Mr. Pfeiffer, in respect of what your comment just was, I wasn't saying that every councilman. I said that sometime people will misconstrue what is said in the council, and they take it as rhetoric. And we have proved that the fires increase when, when the, when the comments come up, the fires increase. We have that data, that it increased. And I said, we all are fighting for the same goal.
Okay, um, Chief, so we have Councilman Burns. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we add 10 more minutes so everyone gets a chance? Because I think these fires are affecting everyone's ward.
Yes, it is.
Oh, well, sure, let's put, um, we'll put a motion on the floor to see if the body would like to add an additional 10 minutes. So is there a motion? I mean, it's...
10 more minutes?
Supported by the Councilman in the First Ward. So, roll.
Thanks a lot.
So, roll call, Madam Clerk. This is to add more time to the fire discussion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alamein supported, but I didn't know who made the motion.
Um, Councilman Burns?
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. LaShaw?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
The vote is eight yes, zero no. Um, go ahead, Ms. Burns, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for being here this evening.
Uh, uh, hold on, Ms. Burns, real quick. Um, can we still have our, our minutes? So it should be like 11:06? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Is that just a police thing, or is that...
I can't hear.
Somebody's watching a movie or something.
Oh, all right. It's gotta be. It's got to be. All right, we're bringing you to order, Mr. Taylor, in your movie. Thank you. All right, so, go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. Um, chief, thank you for being here, because I do have questions. So I was the one who did state at our last meeting, because during budget hearings, when we are to have dialogue and asked you, I did ask you, what are we doing for, we have arsonists? And we have very good dialogue, if you go back and watch, and I'll, I'll email it to you. And so you did state that you were not doing anything at that time. You had stumbled across someone. So I know that it's, it's gotten, I, we have to talk about it because it's a problem. And I do know, because I've been to the homes, several of them, and I know that they light fires. I don't know if you were in here, a lot of them like to go to the older homes where there's a natural fireplace because they can burn in there. I've had several burned down to the ground with the homeless. And I literally made a call and asked them, I agree, arresting them doesn't solve the problem. What I do know there's a problem is, there may be 150 beds available, but it's probably 300 to 400 people that we have that are homeless. Market rate rent is not a rent people can afford at 1,200, 1,400. It's just not. And all these people, they're not bad people, they just fell on bad times.
Yes.
So with that part, but I am concerned Thanksgiving Day, literally, we could not turn after the ladies who are here with us, the Coalition, Tanya and Debbie, and sag, I call it Detroit Street Steel. Fire engines were from everywhere, from Rankin Street, Consumer Powers was out, three homes that were a week ahead on, right down from Christ Fellowship, were burned, then Rankin, then Genesee. There were so many fires.
They were whole.
Yeah, they were just, the whole area, just engulfed. This was Thanksgiving Day. And then I worry about the toll it's taken on the firefighters with running the opioid because they're showing up. And if you're doing fires, you're doing opioid, usually you, you know, you get a run, but the runs, it seems like it's constant now. So that part, how is their morale?
Morale is good. They get paid every two weeks, and we give them the best equipment. And the ambulance, we have 42 people in the ambulance services, that's all they do. And then the rest of them are firefighters, they switch on and we get the job done.
Okay. I know I am concerned about that because we have an opioid crisis, and we also have arsonists. And I'm going to agree with, and maybe you misspoke, I'm not, it's, no one here is inspiring people to start fires, not at all, because it's dangerous. And the close proximity with the home in the city of Flint is very close, just the driveway. And depending on which way the, the winds are blowing, those winds can easily blow over to someone else's house. For instance, when you showed up on my street, the night that you did come out, when the home on the corner of Berkeley and Bous, not the building, the old medical building, you came out, everyone, we had to go outside of our homes because the wind was blowing and it was to catch the, they evacuated five doors down. And so when we talk about this, I am deeply concerned. Because like you said, people are, they're lighting them up, they fall asleep, and this very real, the temperatures drop, that we are going to find people who are deceased and frozen.
Yes, ma'am. To your point about the message, mixed message...
I'm sorry, can we pause the time?
That's the fan.
That's the fan?
That's the heater, I think.
That's, that's the heater.
Heater. Oh, no, 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 they're static. They're, not that, they're static.
Oh, I can't hear anything.
I was trying to hear by ears, I figured that...
All right, so, Mr. Mitchell, we bring, again...
Madam Chair, is that...
Bring you to order.
...speakers?
I don't hear anything.
I, I can hear.
Yeah, it's...
But Councilwoman Burns, when I spoke that we weren't doing anything, our arson investigator was not yet qualified getting out of the police training and being trained to do the arsons through the police department. Now we are.
And, and that's great, but I think when we say, because I think all of us have dealt with fires in our wards.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and I literally woke up at 3 o'clock in the morning to a fire that could have burnt down three, four houses, homes on my street.
We were wondering why you were up so early.
I threw my clothes on and ran down.
Okay.
So my other concern is St. Mark. We had a fire bombing, you know, and there were some protocols where they wanted to come out. And I think that, I don't know where we're at with, no one's arrested or charged, may have been arrested and taken, but I know that the ATF is investigating that. But I want to make sure that we follow through on that because no church should be, church should be firebombed.
Well, we, we, we don't know if it was firebombed. It was, we don't know that for sure.
No, I do, I saw the video. He walked with three cans of gasoline, he lit it, he had rags, he poured it in there, and he fi, it was firebomb.
He started a fire. I mean, that's just your language, a firebomb.
Okay, set on fire. He had, no, not my language, there's video. There, I, I mean, I watched the videos.
Okay.
And I saw the three gasoline cans.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I, and from 20 different angles of cameras.
Yes, ma'am.
It was. It was, it was, to me, that, that is disturb, we don't get black churches. That reminds me of the civil rights when they were trying to get people to vote, and that was the only place that black people could congregate. And we should have taken this serious. And I am with Councilwoman Priestley that when we get someone, she's saying, let's let everyone know and let's set an example that arson in our city is not to be tolerated, that we're taking this serious to highlight. And if the prosecutor isn't prosecuting the people, when you get them over there, then that's something we need to work on and speak with our city attorney to make sure. Because if you're collecting, you're, you have suspects or likely looking at the situation, because some people will burn a house down or burn a, a building down for insurance. And we know that things that they look for, you know, burn patterns, it was the building occupied, you know, those are things that they, and other key factors. So we have a problem with that. If the prosecutor isn't doing his job or over at that office, that's something that the city attorney needs to speak with him and, and council too, to make sure that you can't just burn down the city, because they're also burning down other homes too.
Yes, ma'am. It's called burning of real property. That's a four-year felony.
Yeah, exactly. And they look for those key things. It's a list that they, they look at before they say, okay, this may be arson, which then takes the investigation to be much longer. So I just want to, you know, I understand how Councilman Pfeiffer was, his sentiments because we're not stating at all that, you know, go burn a vehicle, or, I mean, go burn a home. I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not. I never will.
Okay.
Not ever going to do that because I have had to deal with someone who had to come home and after, they pulled out five dead bodies.
Yes, ma'am.
And so when I've seen that and how it affects families, and it affected my family, it's serious. And so I want us just to be more proactive and to have good dialogue to solve the problem.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I asked you in May, you know, was there anything we can do during budget time? Because I think that your staff is being overwhelmed. You know, it's a lot on them. You're picking up people from drug overdoses, fires, it's a lot.
We're happy to serve.
Thank you.
All right, so anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
To the chief. Chief, what are some solutions that we can do as a community and as a council to assist you, to maybe help try to curb some of this? I know myself, Councilwoman Lewis, Councilwoman Mashat, we have went out, we install fire installers and people houses, smoke detectors and things like that. I know that can be a step towards educating the community as well, but what are some of the solutions? I hear a lot of the problems, what are some of the solutions that you think we could do?
We, we do a tremendous job of prevention. We put in around 2,500 smoke detectors in houses. We're not having a whole lot of fires in residential houses. If they are, they're very small because of those early warning systems that we've installed in those houses. And we're yet doing it. As a matter of fact, we are hiring about 10 part-time people, and that's all they're going to do, Council President, is put up smoke detectors. I don't need you no more because we're going to put them up ourselves. So we're doing all we can preventative-wise, education-wise, we're in the schools. The problem, as Ms. Burns is speaking of, is the rash of arsonists. People love to start fires. And we have to make ourselves a committee, police, fire, the law, officers over in the county, prosecutors, that we can come up with a system, also that we can monitor who it is and hone in on who is actually doing the burning. And take them down, as they say, hang them from the highest tree, have them, have a press conference, and show them to the public of what happens to arsonists, I guess. But we got to make sure that they're, make sure that they're, that they are guilty.
Engage in the community and so forth, having you guys all work collaboratively. Engage in the community, having you guys all work collaboratively.
Yeah, engage the community more, make sure that people will talk. People burn houses or want them to burn because they want the vacant lot. Nobody, nobody, and there, and there's people in and out there in the summertime, the kids are playing in there, causing trouble, so somehow that house catches a fire. My problem is, as a fire chief, my job is to save the house or save the community as well, is not getting my firemen injured. So with these young firemen, if that house is fully involved, it's safer for me to keep my men outside rather than have them to rush inside to an infernal. And so a lot of times, it gets out of hand and we see it get bigger and bigger, and that's why we lose the whole house.
All right, all right, so go, yes, Ms. Mashat?
Yes, real quick, chief, because we're going to be done with this discussion. I just want to say, you always want to get to a point where you hear the words, "We no longer need you," but it stings a little bit.
I, I, I was just kidding.
We will still, I, we will still install smoke detectors because as you know, it's something very near and dear to my heart and to my family. And so you, you have some more people, but you have extras as well, just more bodies, more homes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
And, and hold on, chief, so before you go, because I didn't get my opportunity to speak, so if possible, can we add, can we put, I would like to put a motion on the floor to put three more minutes on the clock so I can have my opportunity to speak.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for three more minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, made by Councilman Seventh Ward, supported by the Councilwoman in the Third Ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no?
The vote is eight yes, zero no. So that, three minutes passes. So I just wanted to comment in the sentiment of what I, I heard the chief saying, so my interpretation was a little different than Mr. Pfeiffer's. I didn't hear the chief attacking the council and saying that, that we are directly in correlation. I'll say, we're telling people, hey, go out and start fires. But unfortunately, you know, we have a Council, Councilwoman Burns on her platform, when you, when she speaks, she said that he's not doing his job. And so when those things are being said...
Point of order.
What is your point?
Do not speak, you're not going to sit up here and lie today. I spoke to what he stated, which I just did. And so you might need to mind your platform and not mine.
Okay, I'm bringing you to order. Let's go ahead and just state your main. So, so unfortunately, when we have that kind of messaging going out stating that you're not doing your job, then other people may feel that liberty to...
Point of order.
What is...
You're speaking to my motives.
I'm not speaking to your motive.
I stated what he stated during that meeting in May. So you need to say it and do it correctly.
Um, Ms. Burns, again, I'm bringing you to order. You cannot use frivolous motions to take the floor.
It's not a frivolous motion.
And so you will receive a warning if you do it again, and if you do not have a valid point of order or point of information. So unfortunately, the, this is the rhetoric that goes out to the community, you know, when someone's, because I, it's been stated from this seat, that my fingerprints better not be on the board. And my question to you is, she speak of a video, did you, were you privy to the video that she's talking about with the person and the, and the gas can and stuff? Well, that's a problem because how can a councilwoman who's not a fire chief get vital information that you need to make arrests and to, to do your job? And so it needs to be...
Request for information.
Yes, what is your request?
Thank you, because this is directly, because one, the fire truck was there with the gas can, in the trash can. So the fire department was there, so that's how he would have gotten that. So that's your question.
No, it's not. You, you said, you said it was on video, Ms. Burns.
It is on video also.
Ms. Burns, Ms. Burns, I'm bringing you to order, and let's not interrupt me again. We can giggle, but you can get a warning. And so she stated that it's on video and that she saw it. If she saw it, you need to see it so we can arrest and make, arrest these arsonists like Councilwoman Priestley is saying. It doesn't make sense if our council person is privy to information that you are not. And again, it is concerning because you can't go on a platform talking about how someone is not doing their job. Because if someone is saying, hey, I'm leaving the gate open, people going to go through the gates. You understand what I'm saying? So the fact that you're stating that you're not doing your job, why won't I go burn out a building? Because some people feel that them burning down, well, I'm not talking about the homeless, I'm talking about something different. People feel like, like they're doing the city a favor by burning down abandoned buildings since they're not going to tear it down, let's burn it down. That is true. And so we don't want people thinking that our fire department is not doing their job, but furthermore, we really don't want you not receiving the, the information that our council person, the Sixth Ward, has. So I would like to compel the councilwoman, please, let's make sure that the chief and his staff and appropriate authorities have access to these videos.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Um, do you know that the chief has the fire report? It's not just the report, it is also the video, so he can read it and view it via video. He has the report along with the ATF and the Michigan State arson. So the ATF has them, those reports are readily available. So he already has them because they're already in the process.
Okay, so, so, so thank you, Mrs. Burns. Back to my point, she said we have video. I would encourage you, chief, to request the video because several times it's been said from her seat that my fingerprints better not be on, on the, on the bag, on the can and stuff like that. And that is insinuating that I am, that I have arson, that I'm conducting arsonist behavior. And that's totally untrue. So we want to make sure again that from this body, we're giving good information, we're giving true information, not conflicting. So I can see where that could be misconstrued, where Mr. Pfeiffer thought that, what you were saying, but I took it totally different. So we can't talk down to our public safety officials and expect people to respect your work. We all must work together. So thank you, chief.[1776.71][1776.71][music]